Go.
Okay, I'd like to call this the Falkroft Borough Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM on May the 19th, 2020. Mayor.
Yeah, uh, we skipped a borough prayer. Take a couple of seconds, think of the people that passed from this virus, people that have worked in, think to yourself. Okay, you have a flag somewhere?
There you go.
I pledge allegiance and a flag.
Flag. To repose. And to stand one nation, God intended.
Invisible liberty and justice for all.
Uh, could you do the roll call?
Sure. Council President Papaleo. Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daly, she will be here in a moment. Councilman Nick Waters. Nick, are you on here? Uh, I'll send him a text. Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason McGuigan.
Here.
Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
Here.
Mayor Bob Frey.
Here.
Alex.
Alex Bumler.
And I am present, so I'm gonna text Nick. There were no audience emails.
Okay, I'd like to motion to approve the minutes for the April in-person council meeting.
So moved.
I take that back, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Stand. Do you have a second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Say again?
I just was asking who made the motion, but Kyle waved his hand. All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Move the engineers' report? Motion carry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things that I wanted to highlight. The inlets on Garfield and Montgomery have been completed. We do have an invoice and the amount of $9,500 to replace those two inlets. And I would recommend payment to or no. Um, last month, last month, last meeting, we discussed the road program. The road, I have not heard back from PICO as far as the schedule. And indicated that I would reach out to Michelle Garrity and Heather, her last name escapes me right at the moment, to determine where they stood. I don't have an answer as to whether or not they would be willing to do a fee in lieu, which means that you would put the monies out ahead of time and then would be reimbursed by PICO for the milling and paving section that they would typically do under restoration. That being said, one of the other requests that we had was additional roads that could be completed. And we did prepare a list, we went through the borough and found streets that we felt were in a condition that should be repaved. I don't know, Andrew, did Cullin send that list to you? It would have been about a week ago.
I don't believe.
Should have sent it to you today, I didn't think of it.
Yeah.
Willow Avenue from Virginia to Warwick. Crozer Avenue from Shawcross to Elmwood. Dalmas from Shawcross to Elmwood. Crooked Lane from Ashland to Cul-de-sac. And Ashland Avenue from the seam that's just past or just before Delmar Drive to Elmwood. That list comes up to be about $152,000. I don't know where you want to go. If you recall, the road program within mainly the village, but it included Ravenwood and Summit, came to a cost of a single lane of $419,153. So you're looking, if you were to do this, you're looking about $6.70,000 in road program, which I don't know that you have. Be reminded that if we do all of the village, all of the restoration in the village, you're going to put $838,000 into the road program before you are reimbursed for that from PICO. So I'm not sure where you want to head with that. I might suggest to you that what we do, so we don't lose a month, is to authorize the bid of the road program and then we hash out the list. As long as I get that hashed out within the next two weeks, I'll have it ready for workshop or for your committee meeting, excuse me.
Okay, I think, I think that's a good idea. All right, so I'll go ahead and, is that the end of your report?
That's all I have for this evening.
All right, I would like to enter this motion to put the program out bid for the, that would be resurfaced to be detailed at a later. May I add a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Here's that motion we carry. So we'll move on to public finance and administration. I'd like to motion to approve a community mailer to be printed by SED Printing, about $2,450 for insufficient resources for Falkroft. Entertaining the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Well, if there was unanimous consent, that motion carries. I'd like to motion to engage with JackRabbit for online permit, ticket, and fine collection. I guess before I ask for the motion, I'd like the borough to begin moving away from cash accepted. And, borough, cash is a filthy object. Who knows what's on any dollar bill you're carrying? I'm 2020, I don't even carry cash. Not a thing anymore for me. It's safer, I think it's easier to track. And so another form of accepting payment through JackRabbit would allow people to pay for their permanent fine collections through an app. I believe it's an app, is that correct, Andrew?
Yeah, it's actually they embed a link to how you pay on our website, so.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, so it'll be on the falkroftborough.com website.
Okay, all right, so I'd like to make a, I'd like to entertain a motion and give you JackRabbit for the online permit ticket.
So moved.
Any second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You're opposed, Mindy?
Mindy, you're on mute.
No, I said aye, sorry.
All right. Okay, forgive, appear that carries unanimously. So we're moving on to the treasurer's report for the month of January. Joe, can you give your treasurer's report because I don't have anything for that?
Where are you going?
Hello? I didn't get a treasurer report or a bill list until 10 minutes ago.
Yeah, I sent them last night. The bill list I'm giving you, I'm giving you a paid bills list. If you want to wait till the meeting to pay the bills, I can do that, however you want it. What I've always done is give a paid bills list and then the cash accounts for the checking account that we have. If you want me to change that up to what you're more comfortable with, I can gladly do that. I can, we can get all the bills together and pay them after they're looked at at the meeting.
Um, yeah, I think that would probably better, is that okay? I would pick up for do it that way.
What we've done, what we've done in the past is Tony would stamp them and then we'd get them, put in the correct account number on the stamp, the amount, and the due date and the pay date. And then I'd pay the bills and then the committee person, committee, she would sort the bills into what committee chair those bills are coming from, like someone would be the highway committee, stuff like that. And then they'd look at them after the meetings and go through and then ask any questions. But I can do it any way you want to do it. It's been a little crazy.
You have to do payroll that way.
Yeah, but I mean, but it's been a little crazy now because nobody's been in the buildings, I mean, Andrew, here and there.
Okay, was payroll on this, on this bill list?
No, I don't, I never put payroll in there. I keep that too. I've never done payroll, I can put payroll on there too if you want it and just weighed out people's names. I won't include the names, I'll just put the amounts. I can design anyone.
I mean, if it's not required by law, I mean, I don't see the need, we don't have to do it. Alex, is it, just be on the bill list?
No, I mean, typically payroll is excluded from these treasurer reports at the public meetings.
Okay, all right.
And we really haven't paid anything new, we're just paying the PICO bills and we're not ordering anything. So the bill list is pretty small.
Right. I saw, and I was interested in a little bit. From a veterinary clinic, Brookhaven Veterinary Hospital, who were.
That was a police dog.
One of our police dogs, okay, that makes better.
Yeah.
Looking over it now, and it looks to be small enough that I'm able to make sense of it in quick time here. So I will, now that I've seen it, I will make a motion to approve the bill list for the January. If anybody is, does anybody have any questions about the bill list? Would they prefer to look it over themselves before they vote on it?
No.
No? Nobody has any, okay.
Joe, I will say that what we used to do for, you know, we used to, normally we would get it like the Friday before the meeting, but for those of our more technically challenged folks, I would just have a hard copy sitting on the desk and they would come in about 15, 20 minutes. You can usually digest that list in about two minutes.
Yes, I was looking it over, I just didn't, I didn't have it to look over before. It was fairly easy to skim through and everything looked to be okay, so.
I'll get it to you earlier, I'll get it to you by the Friday before, from now on.
Yeah, yeah, I would appreciate that, that would make things a little easier. And I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the bill list for January 2020.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the drafted RFP for the business privilege tax collect in the borough Falkroft. Before that, would anybody like to talk about this before we continue with the motion? Or I'll listen for the motion, ask for a motion.
Joe, if I can jump in, there's just a point of clarity. What you're actually motioning and approving if you do so wouldn't be the actual RFP itself. You're motioning and authorizing the borough to send out the RFP, not the document itself. So it's written a little off-center.
Okay, so we're not approving, we're just, we're motioning for the borough to just put out the RFP.
Right, and obviously the RFP that's attached in the agenda packet is the one that will go out, but you're just authorizing its advertisement.
Okay, all right, so let me reword that. I'd like to motion to approve for the borough to put out the RFP for the business privilege tax collect Falkroft. Is that?
So moved.
We've got a motion, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who did the motion?
Kyle, I thought I heard you say so moved, did somebody say so moved?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Got the motion, second, all those in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Hey, Joe, just on that one, I'll never oppose an RFP going out so we can look at the numbers. I will just say that I'm definitely going to be concerned about us getting aggressive on tax collection during a pandemic. But I wouldn't stop from an RFP going out to look at it. I mean, that's fair enough, but I will definitely have some questions on that.
Okay, that's perfect, and I think those are perfectly valid questions. I think, you know, we have to be thoughtful and careful and I don't want. So I'm with you on that. Don't want us to get a reputation for being local businesses, so I think you had a fair concern. So we've got the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, are there any, does anyone, yes or?
No, I've got a yes for the RFP. What I said is I'll just reserve my right to ask questions on it once we see what the numbers look like and all. But yeah, so I won't stand in the way of the RFP at all going out to bid, but certainly I'll have some questions in the next meeting or morning after that.
All right, very good, so that motion carries unanimously. I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Willis from Public Works.
Joe, before you go over there, there's one more thing that we'd like to add. The thing I just sent you that came through about 6:40.
I didn't get it on my, I couldn't get the new agenda because Blue Mail is slow. Let me see if I can.
Yeah, hello, Andrew?
Yeah, I sent him the one that you just sent me.
Yeah, that was just, I got that just before the meeting.
Yeah.
What it is, is our actuary, Jim Kennedy, we have to adjust our MMO by like $1,000 so it ties in with the Act 205 report. It's just a pension thing, it doesn't cost any more money, but we just got to do it for the record and I have to get Andrew or Joe to sign the form and get it back to them for the rest of the record keeping.
All right, all right, so I would like to entertain a motion to adjust the MMO from $481,343 to $480,490 in order to tie in with our Act 205 filing.
Motion. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Forgive, and I'm going to move on to Public Works Committee and turn it over to Councilman Willis.
All right, so the item that you see on the agenda, there is a consulting firm, APPI is recommended through PSAB. They do energy consulting. Basically, they take a look at the bills, take a look at the different suppliers and find a more beneficial rate for the borough. The consulting is free, you don't have to, you're not locked into actually getting the supplier through them, whatever they give you, the rate that they sign for you, they're just presenting this option and then they only make their money off of us signing up and from the company that is supplying the electricity. So the idea here is just motioning to allow me to send them the information they need to do that analysis and give us the results and then we can move forward if we wish to with whatever they recommend. So I would like to motion to allow myself to engage in the free consultation services of APPI and provide them with borough's PICO account information to do that consulting.
So moved.
You second, he made the motion, so you do the second.
All right, well, I'll second.
All right, so the motion is made and seconded, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Turn it over to Councilman Ruskowski for the.
Just one, I just wanted to give one update on the trash stuff. Not in a motion or anything, so I just wanted to let everyone know we have talked to Sharon Hill, we're getting some numbers together, I've gotten some information on our polling. We're still moving forward on that. I just want to make sure everyone's kind of kept up to date.
All right. Motion to. Councilman Ruskowski?
Motion to approve the police chief's report for the month of April 2020.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, report is accepted, motion carries.
Motion to approve the fire marshal's report for the month of April 2020.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve the fire chief's report for month of April 2020.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to hire James McTie as a part-time police officer in Falkroft Borough.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
She's just a question on that. I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Is he on or anything?
What's that?
Is he on this Zoom at all by any chance? And I mean, I know this is top of the search list, but thrown out of the window, but.
He is not on the Zoom.
Okay, I'm here. I apologize, everyone, I just got on Zoom, I was having issues with my phone.
Agreed. All right, have the motion. All those.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, James, if you're watching this.
Hey, guys, not to cut you off, the sound's cutting out for me a little bit. I still, I didn't catch the motion or the second. Rogo was the motion, right, but who's the second? Kyle, okay.
Who is the second?
I think he has it, Joe.
I heard, I know I heard a second, did we have one or not?
Kyle. Yes.
Okay. All right, so motion carries. Motion second. Help and Literate. Isaac?
Nothing.
What is wrong? This one's hard, I can't believe this shit.
Button on your, on your. What's that? Want to know? Okay, so, planning and donating, I think I turn it over to Councilman Waters.
Some no news, news to discuss.
Okay.
Actually, can anyone hear me clearly?
Yeah. I can hear you.
Okay, because I'm actually, everyone's talking and it's breaking up really, really bad on my end. I don't know what's wrong with my phone. But I did want to mention the mile pile store located at Garfield and Elmwood. We had talked about that before at one of our other meetings and we were looking for a stop sign or something to slow the cars down, you know, in that area and nothing was ever, you know, mentioned.
We talked about it.
You're breaking a really back in. Hopefully you can hear me.
Talk, try to use your mute button.
Say it, maybe, okay.
Um, so we did talk about that at Garfield and Elmwood. Lisa, if you can hear me, how do we go about doing a proper study to get a stop sign? Because I've also had, you know, myself, or, you know, you assume when you stop at the stop sign, you assume that the traffic coming from Sharon Hill on Elmwood is also going to stop and it's not the case. And that also gives them a whole lot of time to speed up to the light and be your citizens, under normal circumstances, that use the borough building days, bingo, whatever. And the speed on Elmwood is something to slow them down at that particular intersection of dates. How do we proceed with that, Lisa?
There's a couple of things you can do. First, you would probably have the police go out and do one of the studies. I know Chief has that capability. Take a look at the speeds, take a look at how many vehicles. The other thing is that they would also look to determine whether or not you could add a stop sign. There's certain requirements for stop signs, there's minimum requirements under the code. So you would look at that. If the police feel that that's something that could be done, then you would then, as counsel, approve that stop sign, it would be for 30 days. Take a look, make sure it works, and then you would do a resolution after that to actually have it installed permanently. That being said, the other thing, if you're looking for traffic calming, you may want to look at a different way of, a different approach to it and that would be to, again, have this speed study done, but take a look at it from the standpoint, potentially you could put, and there's grants out there to do this. I don't know if you've ever seen the pedestrian crossing, that the crosswalk flashes or the signs flash that they're crossing the street. That may be a little bit more effective than a stop sign, or it may not. People don't seem to care about signs anymore, unfortunately, to the detriment of our pedestrians. But there's two different options. But the first thing that needs to happen is we need to get the speed study and have the police take a look at what they're seeing on a daily basis. That help?
Yes, it does, that's great, thank you, Lisa. Chief, is there any way to get a speed study done on Elm, particularly at that intersection?
Yeah, absolutely, I'll get that done at the 1500 block at Elmwood Avenue, Elmwood and Garfield. I'll put the speed study up and then I'll have that back probably within a week and a half, two weeks.
Yeah, I guess it would be like wherever they're passing by, like Field House, like right before there would be good. Because by the time they get to, they're either slowed down for the red light or, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I agree 100%. Now, do you want that study, when they do the study, it's usually for like four, maybe five days? Would you like that to be all during the week or would you like it to be some of the weekend, over the weekend? How would you like it done?
Let's do, let's do some of the weekend over the weekend.
Yeah, okay, so you want to start it on like a Friday and have it go all the way into Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Anybody object to that?
No. Or I can do it like a Wednesday, like a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, let's do that, let's do a Thursday, Friday.
I'll start on a Wednesday, we'll go into the weekend. That sound good?
Free, right, Chief, they don't come at any cost to the borough?
There's no cost, nope, not at all. And I'll have to print out and I'll give it to you guys and you guys can distribute it to all the council members or whatever and figure it out from there.
All right, very good, Councilman Waters, thank you for getting the process done, we'll get the results. All right.
Yes, also, I have one more thing. Consider. Um, we talked about Ray's Auto. Um, we did all agree, I believe, the last time we had a meeting also with Ray there, uh, that Ray was going to take over the, uh, towing for the police. Was there a contract made up or anything, or am I missing something?
Probably. I would like to split it. We currently have somebody. Please, will we end? Um, you know, I think we're going to have to reexamine it. But I do agree that, that we should be keeping. With fall business. So, um.
It's with the Fallcroft business right now. It's with Serena. Did you say keep it with a Fallcroft business?
Correct.
It's, it's with Serena's.
It is with Serena's.
Yes, that's where it's at. We switched it from Glenn Olden, the SCS Towing to Serena's. Serena's is the one doing the work.
I agree with the president. Keep all this stuff with Fallcroft businesses. That, that's why that move was made.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, um. All right, so let me, let me just, when we begin, when parking permits begin, and it comes, we got the votes, it's going to happen. Um, are they going to be able to hold that business? We, for us to split up between two reputable.
Well, I believe Ray said that he has a business also, uh, used to be where that old seafood shack is. You go down to the street, uh, he has all that property, and we're back there, and that's where he was taking the cars. He would actually tow the cars.
We have plenty of room with Serena's. I don't know what the deal is with Ray's Auto. I don't know where this is coming from. It feels like it came from right field, so I just.
We talked about this before.
We did discuss it.
I never talked about it. I never talked about it once to anybody, so my, my thing is I, I, I'm for the Serena um, thing that's just giving my spiel or whatever else, and that was it, so.
Right, I mean, we, we. Um, you know. I would like to get.
You're breaking up pretty bad.
Yeah, I think it's because. A little better, Chief? Can you hear me better?
Yes, when you turn your head, your sound drops off. You have to look right into your device there, and you'll be fine.
Okay. All right, got that. So I would like to, if I could, revisit with Councilman Waters. Either after the meeting, if you want to give me a call, but I certainly talk about it, not a. All right.
I still can't hear you. You're going in and out. I don't know if Stevie, you can hear that or not, but that's what it seems like. It's going in and out.
Definitely going in and out. Like, it's every other word. Um, I don't know.
Maybe get a little closer to your device there and just look straight ahead. I think you'll be okay.
Can you hear me a little better?
That I could hear completely, yes.
So, I'd like to revisit that after the meeting. We'll talk. Um, I. Was, I think, prior to this coming up, I, I thought that there was a, a company, and I believe Glenn Olden, that was doing it. So I don't, I don't know where, I don't recall it changed. We can talk about.
We, uh, Joe, just a little history on this one, and, and both Rogo, Councilman Ruskowski, and Chief Bear here. Usually when it came to that towing, we left it up to the police chiefs to go out and identify the best available companies to do that, only because it's who they're going to be working with, who they're calling. Um, and it was just an administrative side. It was easier to kind of separate it. Have them, you know, uh, let us know who was the best one, who showed up quickest and all that. And to, to search and through a recommendation from the chief is how we would come up with who, um, does the towing. So I think when Billy says he didn't know anything about it, it's because in, in the past, he would be the one recommending who we use. That's all. But I know for sure, Councilman Waters is right. There was a conversation that we had, and I don't think anyone told him that, so. Um, that's just, that's, you know, that's how that whole thing went down. If, if that clears anything up for anybody.
Yes. All right, so it's something we can certainly revisit, um, because like I said, if, if we proceed parking permits, there, there is going to be, there's going to be more towing. Uh, there's also going to be a motion by Captain Wigan in a few minutes. Um, it's probably going to go increase the, the towing as well. Um, that said, Nick, we'll revisit that. Um, let's move on to Parks and Recreation. Turn it over to Councilwoman Daly.
I have nothing fun to tell you. My, my only thing I want to bring up is that I, we probably should have a conversation about Fourth of July parade, and whether it can happen, it should happen, how we can do it safely. But if we're going to do it, we probably should start planning now.
Okay. Um. I am so tired of, of social, of quarantine that to pull off some kind of social practice. I think that would be a great thing. Um, I think we've all had it. We've had it. Reacquaint one another safe. I think we're just, all of us are with them. If anybody has any disagreements with us, something together, please air them out next. Otherwise, I think maybe we should.
I agree. I think we should do something on the fourth. I really do. I think it'd be a lot of fun, and who knows where we'll be in that, in a couple of months. So we've got to remember. Still a few months away. We could all be in the green by then. We never know. So here's praying, right?
Right, and we could always cancel it if things, if circumstances, there's, there's no new and present. Be mine. So, Lee, are you making a, planning for the Fourth of July parade?
You're breaking up so much, I'm catching every other word again.
Are you, are you making a motion to begin the planning?
If we think it's something feasible, then yep, that's what I'm doing.
Guys, something.
Do we have? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we could, we could reach out to Serena's, see if, not Serena's, to JNT Fencing, see if we can use that M35, the truck they have parked out behind Borough Hall. But it would, I, I, I think if we're going to plan something, we should plan something with a realistic chance that we can go through with it, even if things don't get better. I think a drive-by parade, not something people go to, might be the best option. Or something, somewhere people can be away from each other.
I would, yeah. Lee, I would only say that, um, it's probably more realistic that you'll have Fourth of July than Community Day. So you may even want to divert some of the funds you use for Community Day for a Fourth of July parade, because, I mean, we're hoping that it's going to be hot, that we're going to be back out there again. Community Day is typically the end of September, October, where they're saying it may kick up again. So I, look, I'm not one for planning these things, but I support doing a Fourth of July parade wholeheartedly. I'm a hundred percent on board.
So my concern with it is more of in the village. Um, parades bring people to the sidewalks, and there's not a whole lot of room to see without being next door to your next-door neighbor. That's my only concern. Um, we'd have to make sure families know to social distance or, you know, to be safe. And we usually have kids and stuff walking in parades. Just have to look at it differently, I think.
I agree. I mean, you're just, we're, I mean, what, what generally. Um, we live closely, we live on top of one another. Very close, you know, living quarters. Uh, now, make people aware of the, and, and let them choose. You know?
I agree.
Um, so we have a motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All those in.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Looks like we're having a Fourth of July parade. All right, I'm moving on to municipal. Wigan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the parking code to prohibit parking.
Joe.
On license and on registered vehicles.
Jason, that's a copy. I transferred it, and I apologize. Left that one with you. Sorry for throwing you out of the bus.
It should be uninspected.
Yeah, well, it shouldn't be on there in general. You've already done this.
No, I think we did.
No, we didn't advertise it.
We didn't advertise it. It's not, yeah, it's not supposed to be on there right now.
Yeah. We discussed moving it to our next voting meeting, and then the crisis hit, and we never advertised the ordinance.
So do you need just a motion to advertise?
No, no, actually.
No, we had one already.
We had the advert.
Yeah. All right, well, then I withdraw my, uh, motion.
All right, moving on to the new, new construction committee, McGwigan.
All right, I promise I'm not withdrawing this motion. Um, and I would ask the solicitor to pay attention. I, I want to make sure I have the wording right here. If there's any corrections, let me know. I can always start over. But, uh, motion to accept the lowest bid for the Fallcroft Police Station Borough Home Community Center project in the amount of $4,689,000 by FX Instruction, Inc., upon solicitor's approval.
That's it. That's fine by me.
Look at that. Not too bad. I'll have a guy wearing a tiger shirt.
Seconded.
Motion, who would be the lucky person to second that motion?
Seconded.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those, a big vote. All those in.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Congratulations, everybody.
That was a tough.
It's a lot of work, and thanks, everybody, especially the new folks who came in for everybody's support on this and supporting this project. Uh, it does mean a lot to me, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you again, everybody, for that.
Work was valuable on this, and so I was happy to be a part of it, and, and thank you for including me. And let's, let's look forward to it. It's exciting stuff. Um, I did just want to add on, in my portion. Um, Detective Danny White was kind enough to, uh, to procure, I think, some 2,000 from a local business. Uh, in order for us to drive properly socially. And I would like to entertain a motion. Move forward with that.
You're breaking up, Joe.
Can everybody hear me?
You're breaking up really bad.
I think you need to lean in.
I hear you, sort of.
If I get any. But can you hear me? No. How about Nick? Hello?
We can't hear you.
Just stay, stay in, because when you move, I think that's when your voice is breaking up.
I closed, closed the window. I think the wind blowing in, that was maybe being picked up. Uh, is this a little better?
Yes.
Okay, so we were up, uh, through the courtesy of the chief and Detective Danny White, to be able to ensure some face masks from a local business. Uh, the name of the business. Anyway, I'm seeking, uh, I'm entertaining a motion to be approved. Uh, for Fallcroft residents, uh, to receive a face mask. In a drive-by, social distance fashion. Do I have a second? Motion, please. Can I get a motion?
I'll second. Get a, I'll motion.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? No, no, okay, carries, uh, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, police chief's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just basically going through some of this stuff as far as calls and stuff like that. We see them. We're pretty much getting almost double the amount of ambulance calls, and, um, domestic violence is, is up as well. Uh, everything else, burglaries are way down just because everybody's home. Uh, but we did have a, the utility line service that has been doing work for us. Uh, get some items stolen. We did recover them and make an arrest at this time. Um, so that's a positive, but there's nothing really existing out there that's, uh, we had, we did have a stolen car that was found in Philadelphia. And also, we have the, um, the incident on Fallcroft Avenue with the shots fired that we're also still working on. That's about it. And, uh, I'd just like to thank, um, thank, uh, council for, um, the approval of the station. I know all the officers will be happy about that as well. And, uh, thank you for the, uh, James McTigh, the part-time officer being, um, hired as well.
Sure, anything, anything we can help. Uh, thank you, Chief. I appreciate everything you do for the Barrow. Thank you. Onto the solicitor's report.
Yeah, I'll mute myself. Uh, mostly quiet here. Uh, there are rumors that Delaware County's courts are going to, uh, maybe not fully reopen, but reopen for the majority of matters in June. So we're keeping an eye on that for you. Um, I know Rebecca Geiser from my office has been in communication with the chief uh, regarding the opioid litigation subpoena that Fallcroft was hit with. Uh, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, uh, about a week ago, there was another narrowed request by the plaintiff, uh, pharmaceutical companies, and Rebecca was still going back and forth, um, trying to determine if, uh, that was acceptable to Fallcroft and the rest of the municipalities. Uh, other than that, it's been quiet. Uh, nothing else to report.
Okay, all right, very good. Um, thank you, Alex Booth. Can you, can you hear me?
I didn't hear anything on that last sentence, Joe.
Uh, moving on to the finance director's report.
Thanks, Joe. Um, I've been looking, we've been looking, if everybody knows, the, the federal Congress is trying to pass uh, the second, another stimulus bill. That's where the money's going to go to the state and local governments. It's passed the House. I don't know if it'll pass the Senate. Um, that's the only monies available out there, uh, for us if we run into any problems come September, October so far. Uh, Andrew's in the process of getting reimbursement PMA for our COVID-19 expenses, which we haven't incurred a lot of them, other than hazard pay and supplies and some cleaning, uh, cleaning of the building and the police cars and stuff. So we haven't been overrun. The council's done a run Iced Up Mountains here and expenses. Um, we're just paying, we're, everything's on time, but we've only been paying the essential stuff like we've talked about. There's been no non-essential spending, but like I said, there's no, um, there's no stimulus money directed towards local governments as of yet, and I'm kind of concerned that we're still going to be, we're going to be on the outside looking in with the state government taking a lot of the money. They're already talking, they're already talking about, there's just to do a ton of construction work to state. That's all getting backed up. The Pennsylvania Turnpike's not going to make their July payment to the state. So that, so I'm wondering if we, if we're going to be, if there's going to be issues with liquid fuel money and stuff going forward. But I'll continue to look. I've talked to banks, so if we need to go to any banks, Republic, Sharon, some of the banks we've used in the past, they're, once they get through these PPP loans, um, that's backing them up. They'll, they'll be more than willing to sit down with any kind of financing if we need it. Um, but all, 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 we've been looking for, like, I'm, I'm sitting on a webinar next week. Uh, company reassesses your tax, tax revenues, and so I'm going to see if I can pull some ideas out of there with, what they're talking about. It's a law firm. It deals with this kind of stuff, and they're going to, they, they assess local enabling taxes, like your 1%, your LST tax, and also your tax revenue, uh, your tax, real estate taxes. So it's just, you know, we got to keep plugging what we're doing and hope for the better, that some of these projects come in uh, in the fall, that we, we were planning on coming in earlier, and they, they big, big hits for us. And, um, and then continue, you know, my, my, I'm, like, I'm on the tax collection committee, so we're monitoring with Keystone. Better feel for it come July, where we are coming, going into the third quarter with collections. We did real well in the first, this first quarter, oh, we got cool big hits. And hopefully we'll get that again in early August after, after the second quarter. And then the third quarter is where we're going to feel if things don't change. So, but I'm, I'm on top of it. Andrew's. So, but I'm, I'm on top of that. Andrew's on top of getting reimbursed from our current expenses and then I'll continue to look for stimulus money if we need it. Don't take any questions, if any.
Uh, who's reimbursing us for the current expense? Reimbursement?
It's Pima.
Okay, so we are eligible for something from them?
Absolutely.
Okay, alright, very good. Alright, I'd like to thank you, uh, Joe. Okay, moving on to the Managers' report.
Um, so right now, Tony has the phone. Uh, we are, most importantly, the thing I wanted to let you guys know about, uh, I spoke to Councilwoman Monica Taylor and I've been in touch with, uh, Councilwoman Lynn Shafer. We're going to be doing, uh, I couldn't unfortunately get them to adjust the day. We get what we get. Uh, but County Council is going to be distributing meals in Fallcroft, uh, or actually groceries in Fallcroft. They're going to get out, I think it's 50 boxes of, of, uh, bags of groceries. Like each bag feeds, uh, a family of three or four for several days. Uh, they're going to be doing this on unfortunately Friday, so, uh, uh, June 5th. Um, but it'll be from either, year one or two o'clock. Uh, they'll send staff as well. I think Councilwoman Taylor will be there. I will be there. I encourage all of you to come and help hand out bags to the community. When we get closer to that date, I suggest we do a robocall, uh, letting people know, uh, along with social media. Um, and, uh, it's going, uh, I, I think that instead of doing it outside of Miller's, uh, we might have some people go there looking for it. But I think do it in the parking lot outside of Borough Hall, have them come in one side and pull out the other. Also, I am in talks with County Council. This may not happen. Uh, they, uh, are interested in doing a mobile, uh, testing site in Fallcroft. It would be like a pop-up testing site, so something that would be done temporarily. It may not happen. Um, it may not happen. But if it does, I will obviously let you know right away. That's about it.
Okay, alright, very good. Thank you. Uh, and, is there any old business?
Yeah, Joe?
Yes, Mayor?
Uh, we were talking about that dumpster today. I mean, this council's being very, very nice to the residents, but you're being taken advantage of. There's a front end of a car in the dumpster. I, you know, it's up to you what to do. If you leave the dump trucks up there, they fill them up too. But how does a car front end come out of a house?
I think that's a fair point. Um, Andrew, are you with me?
Yeah. Look, um, I, I think, I, I don't want to speak for, uh, Fallcroft residents, but I've gone around, uh, the village a lot recently. Uh, fishing, for example, in Montgomery Park. It looks a lot cleaner, at least I think it notes, looks perceptively cleaner and, and tidier than it did a couple of months ago. That may, uh, not just be related to the dumpster. I don't think it is. Uh, we're also, people are just throwing out more trash right now. Um, I mean, I don't think there's a mechanism by which we can realistically police the people, uh, who put things into that dumpster. And unless we're prepared to go back to the, the previous system of, of bulk trash, I don't have a better option. If you have one, I'm happy to, obviously, we should, I'm happy to, I think we should consider, uh, alternatives. But, um, I mean, it's not going to be a long-term solution. It's getting used, but I just, I suspect it's still, um, it's, it's still mostly Fallcroft residents and it's probably just, we had a backlog of people. We had a lot of people, like, I, uh, Mayor, I think you can probably confirm, you probably heard it from Brian. We get sometimes 18, 19, 20 requests per week. And so we're usually about, about two to three weeks out, uh, for requests for bulk trash pickup. So I think there's a lot of need. And now that they know it's there, you know, people are unloading stuff and they're home and they're bored.
Yeah, I guess.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilwoman. I'm sorry.
It's my bumper. And I'm not kidding. It was in my shed. He was hit back, he was hit back in January by an uninsured driver and stuck it in the shed. I cleaned out the shed and it's in the dumpster. Silver, right?
Yep. I saw it today.
I apologize, but it freaked you out. But I am a resident, so. It's my bumper. I'll take credit for it.
Your honor.
Joe, it's getting cleaned out tomorrow morning. We've been, we've been getting it almost every day.
What is, what is, what is the, so the rate of fill? What does that look like? So it fills up every so many days? Is that starting to slow?
It is radically increasing. Uh, we went from probably every four, five or six days. Uh, this was emptied out yesterday, early afternoon. It's already full. I was in Borough Hall this afternoon, uh, around two o'clock and, and, uh, it was already essentially full. Uh, I let H and H know and they'll be there at seven in the morning, but it's already so full, people are putting things outside of it again, and that's it within 24 hours.
What does these dumping cost?
Hey, Joe?
Yeah?
Joe? The only thing I could say, put in there, if, if you guys wanted to, I don't know if you want to or not, but putting like a officer on the dumpster, um, and any taking IDs of who's dumping and who's not, that's the only other way I think you could handle it of seeing who's doing it or not or whatever, but that's a, that's a cost. But I don't know how you want to do it.
What would that cost this?
Well, you're looking at paying either a part-time salary or, you know, a full-time or a part-time. I don't know how you want to go about it. I mean, I, obviously the union would probably get involved if we're putting people out there, um, for an extra detail, but I'm just, that, that's, that's a way of doing your, you have the highway guys do it. Just seeing who people are coming in. But that's the only other way I can say of, uh, of, uh, not dumping or whatever else. Um, we thought by putting it where it was, it would stop people from coming in out of town, but maybe it's not. I don't know. I was going to check an ID on somebody, but then I saw the Fallcroft, uh, Firehouse emblem on the front, so it was a resident, so.
I, I really think it's mostly residents. I, I really think that there's a ton of need and people are bored. They're home, getting rid of that old stuff that they want to get rid of. I'm sure we've had residents from neighboring communities put things in there. I don't see a ton of building material in there, so I don't think that we're having that was something that worried me. I'm not seeing any of that. I do check it to see what the materials are. Um, I, I just-
Could you imagine, put a bumper in the dump? No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, we would do that.
One's getting dumped at night mostly?
Hmm?
No, they're, 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 Mayor, they're there during the day and I, you know, possibly there could be people at nighttime, but there's always people there, um, dumping. Um, so like, I think like Andrew's saying, I think there's a lot of people that are just bored and cleaning out everything and getting rid of a lot of stuff that may be laying around. So.
Well, we're not able to provide a lot of services because of the pandemic. I think if we're providing one that we're not usually doing, that's probably a good thing for everybody.
Alright, I agree though.
I agree with Andrew. I, in my personal case, I'm cleaning out like crazy. Like bumper aside, we're getting rid of a ton of stuff. And if I'm doing it, it's likely most families are doing it. I'm stuck home, we're cleaning out, throwing out, and whatever the trashmen don't take, we drive over to the dumpster.
And I agree with that. Trash pickups are up too. I mean, I think, uh, H and H said something like 50% increase in the volume of trash being picked up right now.
Well, nobody can go anywhere, man. We all, we're all stuck home. We've had it.
Yep.
We're, uh-
You're all too nice.
Um, I, I, I'm okay with the dumpster staying. I, and it, uh, you know, as a resident, you know, if we start seeing out-of-townies and they're noticeably out-of-townies dumping, that's, you know, that's when we got to pump the brakes. I mean, I have noticed a visual improvement around the village. It does look better. People are getting rid of things that are slopping up neighborhood. And I think that's a, you know, maybe a good thing. Um, so I'm for it. I mean, if anybody wants to make a motion to go, you know, what we were doing before, you know?
And Joe, the other thing, uh, just, just so you guys know, I mean, even if you want to, I'll, I'll let the officers know that are working, that anybody that comes in there, just ID them and make sure that they're residents. May, may, and then maybe if we get somebody who's not a resident, maybe the word travels fast, like all they're checking and it slows it down.
Yeah, can we, we could do, can we do spot checks? Like whenever you see one, question them?
Yeah, every, when, when, when the officers are working and there's somebody there, they can walk over to them and check it out and make sure. That's all.
Alright, alright.
You know, maybe the work, maybe if, if they're not residents, we tell them they got to beat feet and if they, you know, if, and if they, uh, aren't and they leave, they may tell their friends, like, oh, you can't go there anymore. They're checking now. So they stop it if they're, if there was.
Right, if they don't have a piece of mail with address on it, Fallcroft, license, then?
Yeah, their license or tag. I mean, it's just like that. If, you know, if they, you know, we'll, we'll take care of it. That way I'll let you guys know how, how many people we're getting that aren't residents or whatever else, just so, so you have an idea.
Okay, cool. Alright, works for me. Yep.
Joe, question. What do we do about that house on Taylor that has three-foot-high grass? It's not fair to the residents that live around it.
Bob, what's the address again?
I don't know.
Is it 10?
I, I, I'll tell you whose house it is when we're not on here.
Alright, alright.
I know who it is. I know who it is too. I mean, listen, if you, I, E.V. Wonder could see it. You can't miss it. I mean, it is, it looks-
It's not fair to the residents that live around it.
No, it's not. So, um, yeah, well, Andrew, we'll coordinate with that. I don't know if, uh, I'm sure that there probably already was a ticket written.
So I, I think if this is the house that I think it is, a ticket was written last week, uh, I wasn't dealt with. And I believe this afternoon Neil left a notice of violation on their door, like a thing taped to their door. If they don't handle it by Friday, uh, we can have, we can hire somebody to come in and do it.
That's what we should do then.
Yeah. So, you know.
Alright, cool. Well, well, Andrew, you meet the mayor, coordinate on that and we'll address. I'll drive by it tonight and get the proper address for you.
I think I know, I think I know exactly. I'm going to text you after this meeting. I think I know where it is.
Okay, good. Alright, so, uh, so, uh, we've covered old business. Do we do new business?
Not yet, Joe. Not something.
Okay, shoot.
Alright, uh, listen, I was real encouraged by what you said earlier about the Fourth of July, and I know we have Memorial Day coming up, uh, this weekend. People, people are going to be outside. People are going to be barbecuing. I, I don't know how much longer we can expect people who live in a densely populated area to not do anything. And you know what I do for a living. I respect the social, I respect that people stayed in and did what they were told. But I, I just want to hear from the mayor, the police chief, from council members, like, we don't plan on, uh, harassing people that just want to spend time with their family this weekend. I mean, I, I doubt it, but I figure it's something we should bring up.
No, I, I, I agree. Um, just, you know, I, I would just ask residents to, to, to think, to be responsible, to understand the risk and act accordingly. I mean, you know, everybody loves their family and if, if, as an adult, if you, if you wait, and there is a risk, this is, if you get this virus, it's dangerous. But if, if you know the risk and you're willing to accept, that's your, you know, I think that's, you, family, that's your prerogative. I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Um, I just know they don't get that concern citizens. We have, you know, sometimes we have little overzealous residents that put pictures of people up and they're going to be counting heads and, uh, you know, I mean, let's, let's just remember that we're all just, you know, human beings here. And if you're with your family and everybody's all agreed, they know the risk and they're together and they're not infringing on anybody else's social distance policy, I mean, I think that's fair enough.
Absolutely.
You know, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't approach my neighbors, I don't get too close to any of my neighbors that I talk to out of respect for them, not because I don't like them, because that's me respecting them. But I have social distance with my whole family. We social distance together. So, you know, every family has a right to make that distance independently, you know?
Good stuff.
I get it.
Good stuff.
Anybody else have any?
Uh, yes, I do. Um,
Shoot.
So, uh, Dan White, um, brought up to me, like, probably a week or two ago, maybe a little more. He was interested in possibly, and I think, Mayor, you were there, we were talking about blood drive, um, possibly doing something around that. Kind of the idea with, you, uh, know what's going on. Maybe people would be more likely to donate, given the current circumstances. So he's done an awesome job of pulling together a bunch of information, reaching out to the American Red Cross. Um, and, uh, basically, as I understand it from him, we have done blood drives before with, uh, partnership with the Firehouse, doing it in the Firehouse. So it's a space that they know they can do it in. It's got all the right requirements, even with the new social distancing requirements due to the current situation. Um, and basically from us, if it was something that we were interested in doing, other than finding the suitable location, we would just be publicizing it, um, organizing some sort of, uh, group to recruit people to come out and donate, because they want to have at least, uh, 40 donations to make it worth their while. Um, and then, you know, whatever else we see fit. They do all of the planning. They provide the tools for the recruitment, for the donations, the equipment. There's no cost to us. Um, but it would be something that we could kind of advertise on our end and kind of make happen. Um, they provided some dates in June. Um, or if we wanted to do it, we could just tell them when we wanted to do it outside of that, if it was something we were-
I think it's something we should do, for sure.
Can I say, uh, throw in some new business too?
Sure.
So I just wanted to let you guys know. I wanted to make sure this was kosher, so to speak, with everybody. Uh, the, uh, Delaware County Young Democrats would like to do a clean, a, a cleanup event. I'd like to send them to clean up a park in Fallcroft. Um, they'd like to do a creek cleanup. I think it's something that can be done safely, social distancing-wise. You're already wearing gloves and have trash bags, so, I mean, you're not going to be near each other and you're not going to be touching each other. So I think it's a type of thing that, uh, I am, uh, fair warning, I'm the vice president of this organization. I don't want this to be political. It's not a political cleanup. We just want to get our members, uh, out doing something nice for somebody, and I hope that wouldn't be political. Um, I was thinking a Sunday. We don't have a specific date for some reason, uh, yet, but, uh, you know, I was thinking a Sunday and then have maybe the highway guys pick up any bags of refuse we collect. Probably Montgomery Park makes the most sense.
Do you want me to see if I can get the, uh, Delaware County Old Republicans?
Jay, Jason, in all fairness, uh, we'd probably like to have you guys there too, you know?
Oh, there we go. That's a shot fired.
Good. But I think that would be a great, if we get the two groups together to do something like that for, for, uh, pretty, problem with that. I'm cool with if the, if the Dems want to do it, fine, but if you want to invite the, the young Republicans, I think, uh, I think that would be really cool. So, um, whatever, you know, I, I, does anybody have any objection to that?
I was just going to say, I think it's an awesome idea to have everybody together, because it shouldn't be a political thing. It should be community helping each other, all of Delaware County.
Well, it's a, it's a political organization that came up with the idea. Certainly, the event itself is not political. I don't want anybody to think that. Uh, and I would love to have anybody come. Uh, it doesn't matter how you register to vote.
And I would just, uh, I would just say lighten up, everybody. I'm only joking. If, if the Dems offer to clean up Fallcroft, let them do it. That's fair enough.
Good.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm good with it. Alright, uh, anybody else? Does anybody have any new business?
So I just want to wrap on, so my good, what is our thoughts on the, um, blood drive? I'm sorry, I didn't catch what we were thinking about doing.
I think it's a-
Great idea.
So I don't know what the requirements would be for us to go on and engage with this, Alex. Um, since it's not really a cost for us, it would just be us advertising?
Yeah, then I imagine you would just motion to advertise the event.
Do we need to know when, the details, or can we just, um, say we want to advertise it? Because I don't know the date. We haven't picked the date yet. There's a list of them we could-
Date, we'll put that, we'll put that down. We'll most of, have it ready for next meeting and we'll make a-
Well, some of these dates will be, most of these dates are before the next meeting, probably. Oh, wait, well, alright. We'll figure it out.
Um, well, you know what? If you want to make a motion, um, for date to be determined for, for us to, can we do that, Alex, or no? There's not to be a definitive date?
Yeah, I mean, if you, we need to do this tonight, you can make a motion to authorize Kyle and his committee to put together this event. Just keep it general like that.
Alright, Kyle, go ahead and make the motion. We'll just, we'll get it on, on record.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to, um, go about planning a, um, blood drive, a Fallcroft community blood drive.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, any new business from anyone? No new business? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It is adjourned at 8:11 PM, Tuesday, May 19, 2020.